All right, thank you, everybody. Welcome to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, April 2nd. So we have rescheduled, obviously, because of elections yesterday. It's 6:00 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. And as always, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Aaron. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Eric.
It's not just me. Okay, Barb, can you read the open meeting statement for us tonight?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a role, please?
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Perchatsky?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Barb. Do you want to start the department head introductions, please?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Erin Johnson, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Stephanie Wright, Finance Director.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Paul Benjwell, Captain, Police Department.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that we take with one motion. Unless you see something on there, which is pretty small here, we'll take a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Olson.
Say.
Second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda. Discussion, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, regular agenda. Again, there's no changes to that. So for us to get going here, we would need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Nagel, second by, I'm sorry, Dykstra, that we approve the regular agenda. Does print it? Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Under announcements and correspondence, we have a proclamation that other person Eric Helverson has brought to us, and I'm going to go ahead and read that. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that requires police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Wapaka County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Wapaka County Dispatch Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in this past year. Now, therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of City of Wapaka, declare the week of April 13th through the 19th to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Wapaka in honor of those who diligence and professionalism keeps our city and citizens safe. In witness thereof, I have hereon set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wapaka. So again, Eric, thank you for getting that to us. Appreciate that. All right, next up, under announcements, we have our annual library report. And Eric, I know you have a guest with you tonight, but I'll let you take over.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I'll be doing the first part of the report, and Melanie Peterson, who is the president of the library board, will be doing the second half. So I'll get us started here. Aaron, thanks. 2024 Annual Report. Moving along. So we always start out the report with the values, vision, and mission of the Wapaka area public library. These are essential to everything we do, and as a result, are always the lead-in for end-of-year presentation. In 2025, libraries continue to be essential as community centers, repositories of information and local knowledge, bridges across the digital divide, destinations for continuing education, and drivers of better educational and economic outcomes. Next slide. So to jump right in, to start, a quick breakdown of the end-of-year circulation numbers for 2024. While we do a lot more than checkout materials, this is still the metric that feeds into county reimbursement calculations. Circulation of physical materials decreased by 3.2%, and electronic materials increased by 11.96%. Looking at the total circulation, we decreased very slightly by 0.8%. On the next slide, a bit of a breakdown of the story behind those numbers. You'll note that there's still a big gap between 2019 and where we were in 2024. So it looks like a steep drop, but the story is a bit more nuanced than that. The big takeaways that I think this chart shows is, first and foremost, we're actually circulating more print materials, chiefly books, than we were before the pandemic. We're up slightly versus where we were in 2019. The big drop is in AV materials, physical AV materials, DVDs, and audiobooks have seen an over 50% decline. And the other big takeaway is that, for a variety of reasons, including our decision to go fine-free, which has been fantastic for service as provided by the library to the community, it has reduced the number of renewals. As you can see, those also seeing a very large drop, which makes sense. If you're not as worried about getting things back, then you're less likely to get in and renew ahead of time. So ultimately, total circulation minus renewals is only down 14.6%. And that is a gap that we continue to close. So a big chunk of the apparent drop, 2019 to 2024, is actually changes in library policy and changes in how the library is used. Next slide. And this is a slide I dropped in that is a graphic that we have posted at the library as a reminder that the library offers a lot of things besides books. We're very excited to still offer books. They're still a huge part of what we offer. We're checking out more of them now than we were pre-pandemic. But there are still a lot of other things that we do. And the graphic here offers a selection of the many, many services, programs, and materials that we make available. On that note, I am going to turn things over to Melanie Peterson for the rest of the presentation.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to be here tonight. Glad to be a part of the library. So on this slide, you'll see some of our usage statistics. We've seen a good uptick in visits. We're continuing to trend upwards towards the 117,000 that were recorded in 2019. Reference questions have increased significantly, surpassing totals from that handful of years ago. One other one that's a little bit strange here is the reduction in cardholders, which looks sort of alarming when you see the numbers. But it's really more a reflection of a couple of different policy changes. So one is not a change. One is just that every three years, if you have not had any activity in your account, your card gets deactivated. And OWLS has reported across the board, last year was a particularly large purge. And the assumption there is just, again, changing habits following the pandemic, right? Our lives have changed a lot. We do things differently. The bigger change is how the state reports which library people use. Prior to 2024, you self-reported. You said, "I go to the Wapaka Library," or "I go to the Appleton Library." In '24, they did it based on geography. So in a community like ours, we're sort of like a big hub for a bunch of much smaller communities around us, things like Scandinavia, Waigga. They all have their own libraries, but they're much smaller than ours. People used to say, "Wapaka is my library." They don't get that choice. So very feasibly, we have a lot of people who still go here, but are no longer reported that way. One other thing to highlight is the number of items taken from the Little Free Pantry. It's a big deal. It's a big service to our community. We're literally feeding mind and body in the library. I recently was in there and saw a father-daughter duo coming up from the children's department. She had her little stack of books, and he leaned over and said, "Hey, you want to stop at the pantry on the way out?" And like, she lit up. It is a big deal. And the other piece that's a really big deal about the Little Free Pantry relative to some of the other food sources in our community is the amount of hours that it's available. This is an easy access point for a lot of people in our community. So we're very proud of that. So when we move into programming, this is just a handful of pictures. Again, like Eric said, we do a lot more than books. So you see pictures here from Halloween on Main, from some of our Lunch and Learns, all kinds of good stuff like that. And one point to note here, last year, we did a lot of transition in staff in the library, and we were still able to pull all of these things off, and major thanks to everyone that, you know, sort of stepped in and did all the extra stuff to make that happen. If you want to switch to collections, then we own and have access to a ton of stuff. We still loan out lots and lots of books in their regular, you know, traditional format. But we continue to see demand for physical books and audiobooks increasing. So not like the physical kind that you put in a CD player, right? But that you go online on an app on your phone and get. And so we have both Libby, which is run by Overdrive, as well as Hoopla, that provide access to those things. There are some budgeting challenges that come with Hoopla, but we've been able to sort of put some limits in place for 2025 to make that a little bit easier. All right, talking about operations. So year over year, we don't see a whole lot of changes in like generally how these things go. And last year was no exception to that. One thing I'll note here is that passports have become a new and increasing source of revenue for the library, which is pretty cool, that we can provide a service and have it feed into the bottom line, which is normally how we look at things in the library. And in terms of staffing, right now, we're at 12 and 1/4 full-time positions. That's a half a position lower than we were a year ago, which actually pushes us closer to what would be considered average for a library of our size. Next up is volunteers, which is pretty new at the library. And really, this movement has been spearheaded by our Head of Adult Services, Jan Popple. She has done a fantastic job with it. So in 2023, the library recorded 163 volunteer hours. Last year, it was 718. Huge difference. And we're continuing to see that trend upward. And so the volunteers have made a big impact on our operations, which then allows our regularly paid staff to focus on their critical jobs. So that's been a huge deal. The other piece I've noticed is the energy that that's bringing. And, you know, Jan talks about it at our board meetings and stuff, and she just like, you can see it, right? She's excited about what's going on, and you know that filters through to everyone else. This is some, these are some photos from our Renaissance Fair. So again, highlighting some of what our library is doing to bring people together. This was our second annual Renaissance Fair. We added a whole bunch of new activities for kids. We had some reenactors come in who brought in a portable forge. So there was about 300 people in attendance here. They got to see that forge in action. They got to play medieval games and make potions and learn about how they made fabric back in those times, and all kinds of good stuff. The next set of photos is from our Holocaust exhibit. And again, just another demonstration of how the library has been extremely successful collaborating with schools and other community groups. This Americans in the Holocaust exhibit was awarded to our library, and we were the only one in Wisconsin who was able to have this display. Liz Kinnear, our exhibit room coordinator, did a fantastic job coordinating, you know, visits and educational opportunities through the school and providing community opportunities to hear speakers and other local authors who could share their unique stories. We had about just over 4,000 people that visited the exhibit, and they came from all over Wisconsin. So that means it didn't only impact our library, it impacted our local economy. We saw over 2,100 people in attendance at the exhibit, including 500 students, who also attended a presentation by a Holocaust survivor and another 900 who made field trips. So all kinds of good stuff there. That was a good one. Other exciting news, we got to welcome Simon Baumgart and Jan Popple in new roles at the library. So Simon is our new Head of Youth Services. Jan is our Head of Adult Services. Both of these positions were in transition for a good chunk of last year after the retirements of Pat C. Servie and Sue Abrahamson. So again, can't thank all of the staff enough for stepping in throughout all of that chaos. We're also fortunate that we found these two excellent candidates. They are already doing fantastic things and making a really positive impact on our community, also allowing then other staff members to step into new roles, and we've added a few other employees as well. So when we kind of wrap it all up, we're seeing all kinds of positive things at the library. Foot traffic, returning to pre-pandemic levels, high although shifting collection usage, increased use of job services, continuous technical support provided to our patrons, and new opportunities all the time for collaboration throughout the city and the county. So in conclusion, really just thank you. It's because of support from the community and the city council that the library is able to continue to be a community center, a thriving community center right in the heart of the City of Wapaka. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mel. Eric, thank you. Questions, comments? Anybody? Henry, go ahead.
Just an observation. I know Eric is, I guess you're not new anymore as a library director. Are you three years now? Or?
Doing some changes, so closing on three.
So time isn't flying as quick as I thought. But I guess I just wanted to, I recognize your efforts. The new leader comes in, we have budget constraints. And I think your department took that very seriously and looked at efficiencies and came out the other end of that in a pretty positive situation. So I really commend you and your staff kind of working through some challenges. You know, you went many months without filling positions. So I guess I just would like to just acknowledge your whole department for all their efforts.
Thank you. We had a lot of staff members put in extra time and picked up some extra responsibilities this year. So as Melanie noted, there's a lot of praise to go around.
Sure. Good.
Thanks, Henry. Eric, Mel, oh, I'm sorry, Colin, go ahead.
This might be a little too technical for this. But as you're seeing the transition away from CDs and our change in circulation, you've said, and I've heard, that some of the funding is based on those levels. I would expect that some of these changes are the same to everybody who gets funding from that source. Are we, do you feel like we're maintaining the funding that we get? Or are we losing funding because we're decreasing? Or maybe we're gaining funding because we're doing better than our peers relative to the funding source? I hope that question made sense.
It does. That is a metric. As the usage patterns have changed, I've been keeping an eye on. Each year, the metric with the county usage that makes the biggest impact as far as reimbursement is what percentage of our checkouts from the portion, which is pretty much everything except for Hoopla, which they haven't figured out how to get the right reports run on that yet, is checked out and used by county residents. So when you look at that big pot of circulation, what percentage was used by Wapaka County residents? And for us, that's pretty reliably been between 42% and 45%, depending on the year. And despite these changes in library usage, it has stayed within that range. And for that reason, I do not expect this to impact. And certainly, if it would change in a significant way, that would impact a reimbursement from the county, particularly if it would impact it in a negative way, I would let everybody know loudly and early. But not what we've seen so far. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. It was very enlightening. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on. We have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, staff, or council members that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please give your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any non-agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a project update from River North Ridge Housing Development. And I know that Alex, and I heard that Wade is also on tonight. So welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
We have a presentation, and Alex is going to pull that up so he can give you a full update.
Should be seated now.
Yep.
Yes. So the sewer and water is in for all of the apartments. And the first section of the residential, yeah, if you can, thanks, Alex. We have up the site, rivernorthridge.com, which gives information about Wapaka, gives information about our project. So far, we've seen really good response in that. We have over 100 people signed up that we are sending updates to as things progress in both the residential and the apartment site. As I said, the sanitary stormwater, storm sewers, all installed on both. The electric and gas was supposed to start yesterday, but it looks like they're going to be delayed for a week or two because they went out there and just said it is way too muddy for that to happen. And that is the next thing that has to happen. They're thinking it's going to be more the second or third week of April. They need it to dry out a little bit. Once the gas and electric goes in, then Bowers can finish up his touch-up work on the residential and the apartments. And then we will, with weather permitting, start six homes right away. What we've done is picked out homes that are doing very well in other subdivisions that we're doing right now. And we just decided that's a kind of a median road place to start. And then we'll show, as we start those, of course, anyone else that would want something different or a different size or a different price point, we're going to be able to just put them on a different lot and still build that house. But this is going to be pretty typically what you're going to see with the first six.
I'm just going to flip through some of these. You see the square footage, and three beds, two baths, the garage, and then the price.
So again, what we were saying is that we obviously have smaller plans. We have less price points available and higher price points available. But Alex, if you want to just maybe throw some of those, these are some of the ones that we've had some people discussing, but there's nothing firmed up yet, just because we can't give anybody times yet. So $269.9, two-bedroom, 1346 square feet on this one. And then you've seen these before, but these are the finishes for the homes that we're going to be putting up.
And are we planning to do a model on this first six? Or are we going to look at doing that in the second?
Well, one of them will distinguish, one is the model. And we'll keep, we've had a very hard time keeping our models, quite honestly, in all of our developments. We seem to, we always like to have one because we can, you know, it shows people what we're doing while they're being built in multiple phases. But it's like every single time we do it, somebody comes in and makes an offer and says, "I want to buy the model. I want to close on it right away." So if that happens, we just move to another home and build another model on another lot. The updates on the apartments are sewer and water, like I said, is in. The pond is done. Our plan is to start 43 units in the first phase, which is basically kind of the outside of the left side of the screen, and then, of course, the ones on the top. So we kind of see that we're going to do it in two phases, two rounds, so to speak, of buildings, just so we can speed the process up. And as soon as we get a pretty reasonable occupancy, we'll start the foundations of all of the next buildings to finish it out and try and get it done in a pretty quick manner. Again, reception's been pretty good so far, so we're pretty optimistic about what we're going to see for lease-up phase. But that's the plan, is to start the first 43, not to not start one building. We're going to start 43 units at one time. You guys have seen this before, but this is a typical 12. We have 12, 10, and nine-unit buildings. I don't think I mentioned this, but all of our financing's in place to build all of the houses and to build all of the apartments. So we're financed up and ready to start everything as soon as we can with the weather.
And you guys have seen all these photos already. I just threw them in in case someone hadn't seen them in the past. But just make sure to go to rivernorthridge.com if you're interested. We send out periodic updates, and it will be more frequent as things are actually happening. It's been kind of a lull for a while, so we hadn't, you know, didn't have a lot of updates just with infrastructure going in. But now, as we kind of come into spring here and get buildings off the ground, it's a lot more exciting. And things like that will be sent out in updates.
So with that, anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Alex and Wade. Anybody have any questions at this time? We appreciate you taking the time here to meet with us tonight. We, of course, we wanted to see an update. We hadn't talked to you in a while, and we know it was winter, and frost doesn't seem to be going away. So we're hoping, we're hoping soon, so.
We need it to dry out. That's what we need right now.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're ready to get to the next stage and excited to do it.
All right. Thanks a lot, you guys.
Okay, thank you. Take care.
Okay, going to new business. We have a proposal to enter into a one-year or a five-year We have a proposal to enter into a one-year or a five-year concession agreement with Surf Shack LLC. Laura, you're on this one.
Thanks, Mayor. It sounds like a lot of fun, and hopefully it will be for our community. So we last year had a one-year agreement with Surf Shack, and that was the kayak rental company that put their kiosk or their rental station right by our Shadow Lake Boat Launch Site. And although it seemed like a really ideal location to do it because it's it's much easier to get into the water when you use the kayak launch, it's not all that visible to our community. If you don't leave the community on the south side of Wapaka, you may not ever drive past and see that it's there. So we're proposing moving the kayak site to the beach. It's still pretty accessible and easy to get into the water from the beach and and go into another contract with this company. Last year, we made a hundred and ninety-five dollars. We're hoping that if we move it to the beach, we can make a little bit more. We collect ten percent of all their proceeds. They gave, they gave us two different contracts or concessions agreements is what they're called. One is for one year and one is for five-year. Because this was such an easy, seamless, professional, and mutually beneficial agreement that we had last year, I'm looking to see if you'd be willing to go into a five-year agreement with them. It just makes it so we don't have to talk about it or deal with it again till night twenty-twenty-nine. We do have the ability through the agreements to terminate the agreements if something does happen, you know, before those five years are up. And it just, we'll see how it goes for the community.
All right, anybody have any questions for Laura? Anybody, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Laura, it's just for kayaks. They're not talking about paddle boards or anything yet?
Not at this time. So they did talk about stand-up paddle boards as a potential option in the future, and if things do pick up, we can, or if there's a high request for it in our community, we can certainly let them know and see if we can get that.
Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve a five-year agreement?
Okay, we have a motion by Martin to approve a five-year agreement with
Second.
And a second by Olson for with Surf Shack LLC. I don't know why I'm having a hard time saying that. Any, any discussion?
I just want to let you know, I was talking with one of our Airbnb guests, and they were just amazed that we had this type of rental available and like a, you know, a vending machine almost.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's something if people get the word out, I think it'll be more popular.
And other Parks and Rec directors are interested in this company as well now that I've been talking about it, so, yeah.
Oh, we should get even a, we should even get more than ten. Work on that, Laura. We need a roll call vote on this. Barb, you want to call the roll?
All right, Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Laura, you're still up. Your request for sewage pump replacement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You can find my memo on page thirty-four. So we've had, we have two lift stations that are located, one at Lower South and one at the Beach House. They are ten and fifteen-year-olds, ten and fifteen years old respectively. And they are definitely showing their wear and tear, and our water and sewer department is there. Not regularly, but they have had to go and fix a few things, and it's and it's increasingly more difficult to fit the parts together because they've had to hodgepodge them for a number of years. So we requested twenty-five thousand dollars in our twenty-twenty-five GO bonds, which was approved to replace these. We got three different quotes, one from Crane Engineering for eighteen thousand, and they included adder for stainless rails and upper brackets at both stations for a total of nineteen thousand, six hundred. They won't know till they get in there if we actually need those little parts to be replaced, so it could be eighteen thousand, it could be nineteen thousand, six hundred. And then Sable Mechanicals came in at twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen, and BM, B and M Technical Services came in at twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-five. We are recommending to move forward with the approval of going into business with Crane Engineering to rehabilitate the existing stations at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
All right. Any questions? Anybody want to make a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve the crane offer. Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Second by Nagel that we approve entering into an agreement with Crane Engineering for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll?
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried. Thank you.
All right, Laura, thank you. Next up, this is an update on captive pay, and Aaron is heading this up tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council members, this memo was actually put together by our Public Works Director, Justin Behrens. This can be found starting on page forty of the packet tonight. I'll start by just kind of giving an update on the purpose of the policy and background of when this conversation started. So Justin's been putting a lot of time into this, not only Justin, but also working across departments and working with, I know, the Police Department specifically. And then as it got into the Personnel Committee, really with the Parks Department, as well as obviously finance and and IT, probably the most noteworthy. So the purpose of this policy, and Justin shows there on the first set of bullet points, he has five different bullet points, but I wanted to really highlight the kind of the middle one. It's really, to me, it's to recognize the importance of twenty-four-seven coverage on a lot of the services that we provide in a lot of emergency situations. This policy has been reviewed multiple times. I think it's been to Personnel four different times, and I think it was to Water and Sewer Board, probably two or three times, right? Twice? Okay, twice. This is coming to City Council unanimously recommended by both of those committees. This is a benefit that had about a paragraph written in the policy handbook before. When Justin started this conversation and this research, he realized that we were, our captive pay and our on-call pay was very, very low compared to a lot of the comparable communities, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So this was really to bring it up to a more competitive level. The eligible employees are determined as full and regular part-time, and those are defined in our City of Wapaka Employee Handbook. I will say that the regular part-time, I would say, is, you know, it's not a seasonal, they're they're with us for a period of time and into the future. I'm going to go through this section by section because there is a number of sections, and I think it's just easiest to explain them that way. Before I do that, I guess I will note that this was talked about briefly in the two thousand twenty-five budgeting process. So when we work through this this fall, all of the items that you see here, you'll see sewer, water, street facilities, police parks, and Wapaka Online budget impacts. These have all been budgeted for for the two thousand twenty-five budget. They were budgeted for the full year. We're obviously here now in April as we wanted to make sure that it got done right. So actually, more than probably the impact will be in two thousand twenty-five. Additionally, obviously sewer and water and Wapaka Online are all outside of the general fund, so those would come from those utility enterprise funds. Let me get to the policy. So you'll see the policy in red is what is added, what's been drafted and reworked a number of times. I'm going to first start right here with the captive section. We'll call that the first section. So captive really can be defined as someone who is in an on-call rotation. An example of this would be the Water Department, the Sewer Department. They, the Police Department, have actual individuals that are on-call typically Friday to Friday, and during that time, they can't leave. They have to stay within an hour. They obviously can't be engaging in any alcohol consumption or anything like that. So it's impacting personal life even though they're not at work, and there's a stipend that comes with that, and we'll talk about that. The, within this section, the proposal is from those committees to have the non, I'm sorry, have the captive pay basically be the equivalent of one and one-half hours of pay per day while being captive, so one overtime hour while they're on that rotation per day. The next section is call-in pay. This is when they actually physically get called in. This section in summary basically explains what that benefit would be, and that benefit, sorry, I have a highlighted version here. I want to make sure I have this right. That benefit, I'll look on this one, is so they get paid a two-hour minimum plus actual time worked. The only difference would be if they come in on a city-observed holiday, they would get double time for that time worked. Also thought it was important to kind of call out what they're calling nuisance calls or regular reoccurring things that are, well, it's a nuisance call, and you can see how those are defined at the bullet points there, so they would not get the extra two hours of regular pay benefit for more than one of those per day. So then no one can take advantage of something that's reoccurring. The next section is non-captive on-call. So this is someone who may be in a position, I think the good example is at times the Public Works Director, or I think the Facility Superintendent is another one. The Facility Superintendent is not necessarily in an on-call rotation with like the wastewater or the water. They are expected to respond in emergency situations at times. And this is, just describes how that can get budgeted for in the budget process each year and discussed between the department head, the city administrator, and then city council throughout the budget process as far as a stipend that may be able to compensate them for that responsibility and that expectation. I will say there is a sentence in here that actually Josh and I caught today that in Justin's version was a mistake. It should not have been in here, and that is, oh, did I just screw something up? I think something just reformatted. Here, it got smaller. It's that for these employees, the equivalent of one and one-half hour per pay pay of pay per day while being captive will be paid out as a stipend. That's actually in a different segment, so that would be struck from this. That would not be included. Remote call-in, this is the last section. When it, as this got discussed over the course of months, business is done a little differently now. It's not always that someone has to respond to something that's an emergency or is urgent physically or in person. There may not always be a sewer backup. For example, like Wapaka Online may have to respond to to challenges or disruptions in network services, and they might be able to do that from their home. The benefit is less for that because the impact is less. You can see in this section, it does speak to that benefit being they'll receive a minimum of thirty minutes pay per response, so the minimum would be thirty minutes, and of course, if they work sixty minutes, it would be sixty minutes. If they work fifteen minutes, it would be the minimum of thirty minutes at their hourly pay. So that's kind of a benefit or a summary of the benefit. I did want to also just kind of speak to, and I see that, I apologize, I thought that was in here. It, oh, maybe it is. I'm sorry. Yeah, right here, this page. This is kind of just a summary of the work that Justin did. Justin looked at, I believe, over thirty, potentially more than that, if you count them up, different municipalities, and what those benefits were. You can see that they are a pretty wide range of what that benefit is specifically in this column here. On-call, this is kind of what I'm calling, what we're calling the, or I'm sorry, this one right here, the captive pay, which then he averages out here in this next column. I think this is the better way to compare them. So you'll see some that are lower, you know, currently we're at eighteen dollars per day. He's proposing the average to be that forty-three fifty per day. You can see that is, I'll just mention a couple. I think it's important. Every time we do this, we don't want to necessarily be the highest. We don't want to be the lowest. Some examples of some that are higher, Clintonville's at sixty dollars per day, Keel, one seventy, Nina, one forty, Manasha, one fifty, Aloe, fifty-four, Green Bay, sixty-four. So he's trying to be towards the top, not at the top. Obviously, there's big separation between what he's proposing and what those higher numbers are. This was kind of deemed to be that competitive but fair amount. And then if you look at the call-in pay, these are more standard. These are more consistent, that two hours of overtime pay per call at a minimum, and then plus time worked at time and a half. So you can see that in there as well. Okay, so I think that is what I wanted to go over. Those were the high points that I wanted to hit, I believe. Anyone else? Paul, you've been involved in this conversation, obviously, a lot as well. I don't feel like I missed anything, but please correct me if I have. Josh, if you're listening back there, Josh has done a ton of review. Josh, I'd welcome you out here if you feel like I've missed something, but Paul.
Yeah, no, I think you covered everything in our discussion, so.
Okay, thanks. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one comment, Aaron. I think you said, and remind me if it's true, that this would take effect beginning of May?
Thank you. Yeah, so we're talking about a May first. Actually, it'd be, I think, that Monday's May second. And that, and thank you for bringing that up because one of the reasons we want to give that time is, A, work, you got to set some things up in the payroll system to make sure it's categorized and tracked appropriately. But B, this is something that we're talking about putting streets on more of a regular schedule. So right now, Roger Hanson, our Street Superintendent, been here for thirty, about thirty-eight years, has been kind of the person that always takes the call all the time. Justin, for the future, forward-looking is, and the whole crew has agreed to get into more of a rotation in which they're sharing that load and that responsibility. So Roger has asked for a few weeks to get that set up and organized. Henry, go ahead.
Yeah, I apologize. I should have probably asked these questions before the meeting, so I, if you don't have the answer, I understand. We are now including exempt employees in this, correct?
So the, yeah.
Right, so it's salary people are now going to qualify for these payments. Is that correct?
Yeah, so some of them already are, and I can name the ones that are. A lot, some of them are in the Police Department. So they currently are getting some of that captive pay for being on the schedule. Police captain, police chief, so this would be adjusted with the rest of them. And then they would fall under that captive pay section, the first one I went through.
Right, sure.
And then the other ones, the other salary employees, they may fall under that, it would be called the non-captive on-call. So that'd be like the Facility Superintendent, for example, that I gave. That would be someone that could get a separate stipend per year for that.
So department heads and city administrator are now under this policy?
It could be.
Yeah, okay. I get, and there's a lot of work on the comparables. There's no doubt we're low. I just have a real issue with including salary employees. If we have a pay issue, maybe we should correct the salaried employee's annual pay because I don't know the cycle in the water and sewer week at a time. I, I'm an hourly employee. I'm going to pull six on-call weeks, maybe, in a year? And that's, well, if we go up to forty-three, that's fifteen hours. I mean, that's like two thousand dollars. I mean, that's like two thousand dollars, isn't it? Am I doing my math right? I'm not doing it right. I don't mean to have this all out. I should have called you before. But it seems to me we are mixing classifications of employees. And if we're trying to deal with compensation, maybe we should update for hourly employees and then our salary employees make some adjustments. And I, again, I don't know from a Fair Labor Standards Act if mixing an exempt salary employee, but now we're giving them hourly pay, is there any issue with doing that?
Yes, so the, no, we looked into all that, cross-checked that. There are no issues from a legal Fair Labor Standards Act standpoint. That doesn't mean I don't, I understand what you're saying. It's a little different approach. And I think like from an hourly standpoint too, you know, especially that non-captive on-call, you know, looking at that more as a stipend, negotiated is a bad term, but it's a term that could be used during a budget process for those. And that stipend would be, we talked about it as being kept separate on a paycheck, not just added to their base wage. So that could be tracked. And potentially that allows it to be, I mean, I'm not saying this is the intent, but it would allow it to be removed and overtime too, so.
I just, I, we certainly need to adjust it. It's been years since these have been adjusted, obviously, and we're behind. But it just, I'm not sure about the exempt employees, but that's, I've said enough on that. Thank you.
So, Henry, and this is probably going along your line of questioning here, though, we're putting in place a policy for captive pay, but City Council still has the ability to negotiate who will receive that captive pay and not non-captive pay. And that will be done through the budget process. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, so this does say reviewed by Department Head, City Administrator, with consultation with, from an employee, and it says adjustments as approved during budget process. So that's where the council comes in. So yes.
Yeah, so I think it actually answers your.
Yeah, and we'll have a number of months to kind of see how rotations are working and how it's going. You know, salary employees, they have a little more leeway with schedules and that kind of thing. So it seems to me to be a fair bargain that, you know, you don't get extra pay when you're available. But that's just my opinion. We could talk about it next budget. But I certainly, our hourly employees, this has to happen for them. We have to get competitive, I feel like.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it is important, if you look back at page forty-two of your packet two, where you talk about the budget increase, I think Aaron hit this, and it says that in there too, that these amounts have been budgeted for a full year already. So those amounts are in there, even though it says a budget increase that was included in your 2025 budget. And I think it's really important for you to understand too that, you know, you have the sewer and water and the Opaquah Online, and Aaron's already said that, but I just want to reiterate that those are enterprise funds. So those do not happen within the general fund. So we're really talking about the streets, the facility, the police, and the parks. And the two big ones there, obviously, are the police and the street. And we obviously want them to come in if there's an emergency. So, I mean, it makes perfect sense for that to be included. Anybody else have any other comments? I know it's a lot to take in, you guys, and I appreciate that we have these other committees so that they can go through these, rehash these things. So I know a lot of you have seen this already and have had that discussion. That's pretty awesome.
Yes, sir.
How are we going to measure down the road how effective this change is going to be if we're putting more money into something? What does that look like?
So Corey, we have not talked about a, like benchmarking this or putting a metric on it, like many of our other benefits, I would say. I think the goal was to just bring it to a competitive standpoint like others are. I can tell you, others don't necessarily have those metrics. Obviously, we are able to pack through payroll, track how many times that people are coming in and not coming in. But we don't have a separate mechanism for that.
So is this something that we could talk more about during the Personnel Committee for Budget Workshop at the fall?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That could be discussed. Yeah, if City Council felt like that was important.
After six months or so of every take.
I think that'd be more than a fair conversation. This also says it's to be reviewed every five years, shall be reviewed every five years. But you guys can review any policy anytime you want, so.
Okay, anybody else? I, you know, again, going along with your question, Corey, too, I think what helps me to understand this too is that if you look at that spreadsheet that Justin put together, comparing it to other communities, I really feel like we probably have been underpaying those individuals that have had to come in or have had to, you know, sit on the couch at home, you know, waiting to see if they get a call or not. So, I mean, I justify it by saying, hey, we've gotten away with underpaying them for quite a while, we need to bring it up to a standard that is at least average to other All right? Any other questions? Staff is actually looking for a motion to approve this, adding this captive pay to the policy. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve updating the captive pay in Article Three Policy, three point five. Any discussion? If not, Barbara Colerole?
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
License report number seventeen fourteen, that's Operator's License, that's on page fifty of your packet. We would need a motion to approve those two names.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Nagel, that we approve Operator's License seventeen fourteen. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, next, we have Communications Recommendations of the Mayor. This is kind of weird how we're doing this, but Aaron's actually going to give us an update on where we're at as far as the City Administrator's position. Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. So City Council, April eleventh is the first review day for the applications. I can tell you, there's, are applications that are in. I know Mayor Smith's going to put like a subcommittee or interview committee together and have those interviews as soon as possible, looking at having a meeting next week, Tuesday, with I P R, Jess and Jay, to get those details all set. Mayor Smith will be in touch. And then, you know, from April eleventh, we'll just keep you informed on how that process is moving from there. We also talked about, you know, staggering the recruitment process. So we're pretty close here. Another thing we'll touch base on on Tuesday is opening that Economic Development Director, Community Development Director position and recruiting for that. So can expect to see something soon on that as well. Anything else, Mayor?
Well, I did, I did ask three individuals to sit on that committee with me for the interview process. And so other council members know this, it will be next Friday, and it's Friday morning. So I tried to make sure people that were available at that time. And Henry has agreed to, Paul Mayo and Eric Olson have all agreed to be on that group committee. If you have anything specific you want to talk about, you know, let one of us know for sure, and you were going to talk about the questionnaire that got put out.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, so please check your email, your city email, tonight or tomorrow morning. If you could get it done by the end of day tomorrow, that'd be awesome. There's a short questionnaire, shouldn't take too long. It's like a Google Forms type thing. If you can submit your responses, it just kind of asks, what are you looking for? What's kind of strengths do you want the next City Administrator to have? That'll help formulate questions, that'll help formulate a review process. So if you can do that by end of day tomorrow, that would be very appreciated.
We were told today that two out of the eleven have submitted it so far. I'm not one of them either, so let's make sure that we get that in so that that helps them.
Who is it? Who is it?
Yeah. Okay. All right, just one other thing before we adjourn. And again, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Aaron to do this, but just want to give you an update on what's going on with Justin, so.
So I think everyone here knows, obviously, one of Justin's children tragically passed away last week. Funeral is on Friday. I know the city is going to be going kind of as a group, I believe, where there's details that are going to be ironed out tomorrow during a certain time for the visitation. So if anyone's interested in that, please check your email. I'll share those details on how that'll happen tomorrow afternoon. It'll be Friday morning, a visitation that it happens. Obviously, keep Justin your thoughts. If you pray, pray for Justin and Christie. Yeah.
And Justin is actually taking a leave. We're not sure how long that's going to be, but we've, you know, extended that to him for whatever time it takes. So in the interim, we've actually have talked to Roger Hanson about being the interim Director of Public Works. Obviously, he can do the day-to-day stuff, does put a little bit more work on the Department Heads too, of course, for the administrative part. But, you know, something that we can certainly handle there.
Yeah, Roger and all of his super dudits have really stepped up and was able to talk to Justin. Justin wanted me to pass along how thankful he was for staff and council and everyone's support, so wanted to pass that along.
Okay, Aaron, thank you. All right, I think we're ready to adjourn. Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, we're adjourned at seven oh three P M.